Welcome, everybody, to the May 2nd Planning Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from April 4th. Are there any corrections that need to be made? If not, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
I've got a motion to approve the minutes as is. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, nay? And put nay as an abstention since I was out of town, if you will. First item on the agenda is SD 2204. Hunter? Chairman?
SD 2204 is a 136-unit, originally submitted as a 150-unit MOP. This is Townhome Apartments located on 19.92 acres. The applicant, SC Civil, is acting on behalf of the owner, 68 Ventures BTR Holdings LLC. And this is, I'm sorry, that's actually the MOP project which follows the preliminary and final plat procedures. This is located on the east side of Lawrence Road. I'll show you a map in just a second, but it is, this application came in before a moratorium and before zoning was implemented in this area that is reviewed as unzoned Baldwin County, lying within the Fairhope Planning jurisdiction. The proposed, what's proposed is all streets and utilities will be private and the responsibility of the development landowner. Baldwin County Highway Department and Baldwin County Planning Department are also reviewing this property administratively. It will not be going to their planning commission, but they will be reviewing that at the staff level. The subject property is on the, on the left is the aerial photo. And on the right is the, it's our zoning map that's online to show you proximity to other things around. The site plan has been revised to include the 136 units, as you see on the screen. A traffic study was, I'm not going to read all of this, but it's here if we need it. Traffic study was performed and improvements recommended were a turn lane at the intersection of 98, I'm sorry, at Fairhope Avenue and Lawrence Road. There was a comment, review comment from the county early on, preliminary comment, that said right-of-way would need to be required to implement that turn lane. We checked, we asked the applicant about this and they showed, they submitted a plan that fit all of the improvements within the existing right-of-way that did not require any additional purchase of land for right-of-way. I asked Baldwin County about that and they will fully review that at another time. There's a, they have a building or construction plan review. That's when they'll review that. So that is ultimately, both of these are Baldwin County roads. We reviewed by the Highway Department for that final approval and whether right-of-way will be required or not. I did want to mention one thing on that, just talking, we've got some utilities out there. There's some gas utilities. On the plan, it shows gas paralleling and we actually have some transmission lines that come under the road. So just want to put that out there in case this is installed to make sure we can get with our gas department to, it looks like there's some gas lines that I don't think they're aware of. Drainage, this is, you see in your staff report, there's a lot of discussion on drainage. I'm not a drainage expert, so, you know, answers from the applicant. Richard Johnson's here with the staff if there's some specific questions. But in general, there are three drainage basins on the site. Most of that is captured in underwater drainage pipes and two ponds are implemented in the, in the designs. The applicant stated that there's almost 200,000 square feet of cubic storage and provided, which is greater than the 69,503 cubic feet required. And I say gallons, I think, cubic feet. The existing drainage basins are here in relation to the site. This is their drains plans. You can see pond one and two. Pond one's in the upper right corner. Pond two is on the south side of the property and discharges to the south. The revised drainage basins are shown on the screen and according to the design, design of the engineer, the flow rates at each basin are reduced. And then cumulatively, the flow rates of water pre-development and post-development flows are reduced, which is our minimum development standards. Landscape plans, there, street trees were added. There's no landscape buffers here. This is outside the CINI limits and with SB 107, our tree works does not apply. So the landscape buffers are not in play here. We did kind of ask for a screening on the north and south property lines. That was not provided. But there are trees being preserved on the southern boundary and a couple, I believe, on the north side. There is a screening around the lift station. There's a private lift station up by pond one that is provided with screen. Green space, great, their total project is, has a net density of 8.7 units per acre, which requires 25% green space. That, by the applicant's calculations, 4.8 acres are required. By what they've stated, there's 5.21 acres. Now, as most of you know, our subdivision regulations require greens, have green space types. So what was submitted previously was civic. That's been amended to include a park type, typology. 4.6 acres are included in park with the remainder made up by the 30% of the wet ponds. Staff at this time does not feel the proposed plans meet those green space requirements of the subdivision regulations. Some of the key words in there, natural, you know, it's contiguous by its, and I want to be clear on undeveloped. What my interpretation of undeveloped is not undisturbed. You know, it's a, it can be disturbed, earth moving and some things like that. This is not a preserve green space type. But at the end of the project, it's undeveloped, it's an open space for recreation and not the remnants. So, and that's what that says, that blew it up there, but, you know, it's undeveloped natural area for unstructured recreation. Apartment includes some areas for structured recreation such as ball fields, but generally this area should occupy no more than 25% of the total area. Well, I think that's important. In a big, open green space, having some of the amendments here, some of the amenities here, such as clubhouse, park, playground, you know, that can make up the kind of structured open space, green space in a park typology. But no more than 25%. This is the graphic in that table that shows a park. You see some basketball, tennis courts, baseball fields. But the rest of it is pretty much open land connected with trails. Just some of the brief critiques here, the space between these buildings, it ranges down to 35 feet on the east end and probably 60, 70 feet. You know, we don't feel this is green space. There's drainage here, there's grading. It's a walkway and if you've got two large areas of green space connected with a walking trail, I think we've attributed some, counted some of that as green space. But, I mean, this terminates into a parking area. So don't feel that that makes the intent of green space. The area pointed to on the screen here is .16 acres for a park. It's disjointed from the rest of the area. It also allows the calculation of the wet pond by it being its proximity. But to get to that, you have to walk alongside walks that transverse many driveways. There's, that doesn't, in our mind, is not what a park is. Kind of the same thing here. The three areas are disjointed. You know, they're, it's one thing to, I believe in a previous review, we kind of had two large green spaces and a traffic coming, a crosswalk was one thing to get those two connected. But here, you walk out of one green space and have to walk along the road and cross driveways that are back-to-back-to-back. Again, not our opinion of what a park is. The subdivision regulations do, as most of y'all know, allow, they actually say you can't include drain spaces for, in green space. But they have this caveat, in cases where the holding basin is clearly integrated into open space parks, like green space credit shall not exceed 30% of the service area of, you know, 30% is what you see a lot of times. In our opinion, at the staff level, this is not clearly integrated into park space. We don't believe it's park space, so it can't be integrated into that park space. Just some examples of things, we quickly looked online. There's not a deep dive here, so I'm not saying any of these plans are better than others, but these images reflect yet another example of what's in the subdivision regulation chart. It's clearly, we clearly, this is the word clearly, that's a little subjective, but, you know, this is clearly integrated into a park in our review, in our mind. I don't think the, the plan here is clearly integrated. The backsides of the ponds can't be used as park. There's an outflow on the south side here. You can't walk back here and cross that. That's, that's not an integrated pond, in our opinion. Access drives, so we did have, and I know we haven't spoken about this project, but you did see the staff report February, I believe. So one of the concerns we had at the time, we don't allow private drives. But an access road has been utilized in many areas. And this almost gets into a lot and block with a private street. This is not what is proposed. I'm just showing, for example, the revision they did make here. They removed this access drive and the stub street to the east. So this, for the access road, I think we're okay. All the addressing can be done off one road per Baldwin County 911. So we're okay there. There was another concern we had, was it meet fire code? And the international fire code requires when you have, and I don't, the specifications, I mean, it's about how many multifamily units you have and all of those things. You have to provide two roads and they have to be a distance apart that is half the diagonal of the property. And that was our concern there. There is an exception. And that exception states when you have under 200, I hope I'm quoting that right, it was in the staff report, the exact number, under 200 units and it's approved sprinkler system in those buildings, then you don't have to provide that second access road.
Hey, Hunter?
Mm-hmm.
On our sheet CO2, it doesn't show that access going to the east.
No, sir.
It does show it on the next page. So which, which is it?
It, the, it is not there. I believe they've put on the plat a easement, you know, kind of hash line, but it's, it will not be paved. We have a problem connecting public roads to private roads. So, you know, let's say this project's approved and in 20 years, they come, somebody develops that property to the east and wants to connect to that, but it's under single ownership. Can we mandate that right? It's not, it's not developed to a public standard. It's a private access drive. So that stub street can meet the requirements of a fire access road. Just by having the stub there, you're thinking about the future and having a secondary access. So removing that was okay to meet the fire access road. And removing a second entrance if they so choose by sprinkling the buildings, you know, resolves that equation.
Okay.
Wetland delineation was performed. The entirety of the property was consisted of uplands and no wetlands on site. The comprehensive plan, as we're in the middle of revision to our comprehensive plan, trying to kind of keep up with all the world around this rapidly changing, is not a regulatory document. It's guidance. And, you know, what it says is in around our villages, around our commercial nodes is where that build-out analysis will be denser in those areas and slowly transition to lower density development. There's lots of concepts that that's called, but kind of one of the more recent ones that I know we've discussed for a few years is this rural-urban transect. The, on the, the image on the screen there is you're, you're more dense, you move out to rural, it becomes lower density. In our comprehensive plan, what you see on the screen is a large asterisk. That is the commercial node at the intersection of Fairhope Avenue and Highway 181. That is the closest node within our comp plan. As the crow flies, that's 1.14 miles away. As you drive, it's one and a half miles, just a hair over. We don't have exact guidance. I want to be very clear. In our comp plan, it doesn't say, well, if it's this far out, it's this far out. Well, we don't have that. And what we've looked at, I think it's very common to use pedestrian sheds, those who are quarter, half mile. We were generous with a half mile. That is where, you know, people can expect to walk, bike through those things for intermodal connectivity. This is outside that. But as we looked at a project last month, we also looked further on at development patterns. And what we found here is it's all single-family residential. It's farmland. It's larger lots. I won't, I don't know if anybody's actively farming. Won't speculate on that. But it's larger lots, shown on the screen. We took a half mile around this site and looked at what's there. So I know some of the comments in, and when I asked this question, how does this meet the comment, the comp plan? It was providing green space and providing some things within the comp plan, you know, affordable housing. But, but what, what we get to here and what our stance is, is where is it geographically located? I think the comp plan offers guidance on that. So as a staff member, and it's subjective, we don't think this meets the goals and intentions of the comp plan. And then the rest of this is, is about utilities. I won't read this. It's in the report. There's some utility comments in here that deals with basically the aid to construction cost. These utilities getting to the site, if approved, will be at the developer's expense in general. That's the general statements, but I won't get there. I will, just because it keeps changing and it's not on here, getting transformers for projects right now, there's just incredible delay. So just want to make sure people know that. If it gets approved, there's limited time to go build something. And getting out of front of some of those things, I believe, last check, we were...
72 weeks?
...delayed from ordering, you know, transformers and getting them in hand. So just want to mention that. But with all of these things in place, staff is recommending denial of this case. So that's the end of my presentation. SC Civil's here representing the applicant. If y'all have any questions for them or us, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Hunter. Oh, was anybody here, Larry, is this yours?
Yes, my name's Larry Smith with SC Civil on behalf of the applicant. And just want to go through some of the items here within the staff report and just add a little bit of clarity from our side. On the drainage comments, there was comments about the downstream and how we were asked to do some revisions. Within the actual email and within the DRC comments, it was just requested to be provided a letter from the attorney talking about downstream rights and that letter was provided. It wasn't requested of us to make revisions, but I think in the staff report, it kind of insinuated that we were trying not to make changes that were requested of us. Then on the green space comments, I don't know how often y'all flip through the different types of green space. And we've had this conversation before in meetings with Hunter. And it kind of goes back to when there used to be the set number of LID requirements that you had to have. There's only so many options that you have afforded to you. And every site, you can't utilize some of the options. If you go through the natural green space, the preserve, we don't have creeks or, you know, flowing through there. So that option goes away for us. Trail and greenway is supposed to be located on those type of features, as water creeks and such. So that option goes away for us. Park is the first option you get to that can actually be utilized with the way that staff interprets natural green space not being a preserve green space. So that's the first category you get to that's even a viable option within the green space types allowed. Then you go into the civic green spaces and, you know, we had conversations with this one on multiple projects with Hunter as well. But when you get to the green type, which is what we had tried to use in the past, there were, one of the requirements there is to have right-of, public right-of-way on two sides. Well, when you have private streets, the staff doesn't interpret those as right-of-ways, which they're not technically. But, you know, we tried to make the argument in the past that, you know, they are roads and we are putting our green space up against those roads, whether they're public right-of-way or they're not public right-of-way. And so the staff's interpretation is that did not meet it, so we don't call it that. But that's truly, I think, more the correct place this falls, but trying to get to what the staff is recognizing as green space and not, that's where we fell. The plaza also has the two rights-of-way requirement, so that's not an option. Courtyard and playground, both have very small total amounts that are allotted for them. You have an eighth of an acre, you have a quarter of an acre as the total. When you're trying to hit, you know, five acres of green space and you're trying to break it up in eighth of an acre increments, it's not a logical selection either. So that, those are the issues that we have within the actual subdivision regs as far as the green space goes. And then going to the green space drawing, I'll flashback to it. The idea that since the wet pond facility doesn't have a sidewalk, you know, wrapping the entire pond, I live in a subdivision that has a pond smaller than both of these ponds. They don't have sidewalks, but it is the best amenity that our subdivision has. You go into it, and I don't want to name the subdivision, there might be people here that don't like me, but a couple of y'all know what subdivision I live in. You go out there on a daily basis and there are kids fishing in that pond. It is a pond that is well-loved and it's one of the best amenities that we have, I believe, in several of the subdivisions in the area. There is no, not a sidewalk down around that pond, but there is grass, there are areas for these kids to put their tackle box. There's, I guarantee if you're driving there right now, there's going to be a fishing pole laid up on the right-of-way on one of the trees because it's been there for about four or five days. But they get home from school, they're out there every single day. So to say that it's, it's not a park-type amenity, it really, I think it is. We have definitely a better sidewalk configuration on the southern pond that is wrapping it. On the northern pond, the northeastern pond, we have sidewalks on two sides. We have park benches called out for that side to kind of help facilitate that. So I just disagree with the fact that these aren't true amenities for the development. Just seeing what happens in my neighborhood. As far as the, the green finger, 35 feet, when I was a kid, I was out playing football every single day. I wish we had 35-foot strip to throw a football. We were playing in the streets. I mean, and unfortunately, a lot of times it's supposed to be touched, but two-hand touch got a little rough. And so I disagree that the area in the one little finger, the rest of it, I think we have good connectivity. There is a crosswalk to the northern end where that green on the far east of the northern pond, there's sidewalk crossing from sidewalk to sidewalk. You're not going across the driveways. That's why we pulled it out to that point so that you can truly access it through the connectivity points of the development. We have sidewalks wrapping both sides of the street within the entire roadway system and then also internally through the green spaces, taking you from different points of interest down to the dog park, down to the playground, to the pool, and then to the water features. So I think within the confines that we have on green space, I think that we did truly meet the intent of a green space. We do have a little bit extra as far as the green space goes. So some of that 35-foot, if it's not liked, we can pull it back, but I think we met the intent where those, well, 35's only that small, narrowest point between the two buildings. After that, it gets up closer to 45 feet. And then the last section that we had was on the comp plan. You know, when we address the comp plan, we address the subdivision type comments within the comp plan, which are your green space standards and items such as that. When you start getting into density and uses, those are zoning-type issues. And I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think the comp plan is intended to try to put zoning on unzoned areas. And so that's basically what I'm hearing right now, is that the comp plan can dictate zoning in unzoned areas and density in unzoned areas. We meet the density requirements within the subdivision regs, which is what we're bound to based on green, the density comes into play for green space and we're meeting that. So I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions and I'm here to field any questions that you have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions with the engineer at this time?
Not at this time.
I've got one question, Larry.
Yes.
The letter that Mark Ryan sent out had one interesting question that I hadn't thought about before, but based on the overall, you know, down, downstream, I mean, it looks like that y'all have, you know, met the requirements as far as the percentages on the discharge. But what about the areas where the water does not actually go through the retention ponds and...
The bypass.
And bypasses the essential ponds and goes on neighbors' yards. In that case, how, how is that addressed in the plan?
So the bypass areas do have ditches that are putting them into, and I assume what we're referring to are, what we're referring to as this area here. Well, yeah, this area here and then we have a small area here. All those topographic lines are carrying it to the existing place where the runoff is discharged. All of those areas were accounted for in the overall runoff and the downstream analysis runoff.
But what about on the locations where they're being discharged to?
Their sheet flow to the, following the existing contour patterns.
But I mean, is the water flow going to be increased in those areas is what I'm asking.
It's per the drainage report, that, no, they're not being increased to those areas. They're all sheet flowing to the same place they currently do. And so they're actually all within the calculations that are within y'all's report.
Well, I'm just saying though, but for those individuals whose land is draining on, if you're increasing the coverage, you know, it just seems like that the volume's going to be increasing in that area, maybe not overall downhill because you've, you know, I don't know the answer and was asking our attorney about it, you know, but I, you know, if you've got the retention ponds that, you know, are holding more water back, you know, that's good for the downhill, but I'm just wondering about those immediate neighbors, if there are buildings that's going to be dumping water right on them? If that, how, how that's addressed in the, in the plan?
So what is happening is there's a small sliver that used to have a larger area that is discharging to the southern property line. Now there's just a smaller area that is discharging to the southern property line on those bypass areas. Before, if you, I'll go back one.
One more.
Yeah. So in the existing sense, all of this area here, sheet flowed to the south. So all that is coming through and coming down and hitting a point that is right there. And then you move forward to this plan, we're not grading up along the property line. Those contours are staying in the same area. So the only change is the overall area has been reduced. There is a small amount of impervious, which is the back of those buildings, but it does not equate to the same amount of area undeveloped that was discharging there. So at the end of the day, all of the runoff that's going to that southern property line, the rate of runoff has been reduced.
Okay.
I had, it's, it is a question, it's a, I took issue with a statement in the letter from Casey Pipes, but it's a question... letter from Casey Pipes, but it's a question to you because I think, I think you would take issue with it too. So in the second paragraph, he says, as indicated in the report post-development, stormwater runoff would be greater in volume, but at a lower rate than pre-development runoff. This is typical of every development project where raw land is being developed to some higher use. So does, thinking of projects we've done together.
Yeah.
That, that's not true. I mean, that, that.
The, can you read the statement to me again?
Sorry.
Because I can only think of one project to answer your question, but I want to make sure I'm answering correctly.
I can think of one we've done together, I can think of a dozen that I've done, but that, but he says, this is typical of every development project where raw land is being developed to some higher use. And then later says it is impossible to reduce the volume of stormwater generated on a parcel of property when it's being developed from raw land to something else.
So the only way to reduce the volume is to infiltrate and Baldwin County.
And use in a, in a different way, yeah.
The, the, yeah, to collect and reuse, but I mean, in reality, the, the amount of volume that we're, you talk about in these larger developments to actually try to reuse, it's a very minuscule amount that you'd be able to actually reuse in watering their grass and stuff like that.
But going, I mean, do you?
No, I, I do agree with that statement. The statement actually, for the most part, came from me when we were talking and he also, the problem you have, unless you have a soil that's highly, highly able to be infiltrated, then you can't reduce that volume. Most of the soils in Baldwin County are not. We've had one project where we did have good infiltration that I can think of that we couldn't actually meet where we reduced it, and I can't even promise you that we reduced the volume.
That, you know, there's a project downtown where they reduced the volume that you designed at the Coastal Community College.
Yes.
Where the volume was reduced. I, this is not the core issue here.
Unfortunately, those methods aren't allowed anymore.
I know that, with the Sam Timneys. But I, but I can think of a dozen projects we've worked on where the, the post-development volume was reduced through infiltration or reuse on site. So not to nitpick, but I took issue with the, it is impossible to and that this is typical, like this is a fact. I found that misleading.
Okay. I hear what you're saying. On this site, we do not have the ability to infiltrate.
That, that would, that would have been a more helpful statement, the broad, the way it was put.
Yeah, I understand, broad, broad strokes are sometimes.
But sometimes it just sound, you know, but then when we sit here, we're like, then how good is this project for this site? If this site's not good for infiltrating and we're putting this kind of a density on it, maybe this is not the right location for this project.
Well, if you pull up a soils map of Baldwin County, probably about ninety-five percent of that is not able to infiltrate. We don't have type A soils in most places where we did on the, one of the particular projects that we're referring to that have highly sandy materials. And then the next issue is confining layers. We can find sandy material, but we aren't allowed to punch through those confining layers that just give you perched groundwater. And that's another issue, and that's just an issue that we have in this area overall. If we were down on the beach, then definitely we can do it. But even if, once you get past intercoastal, the materials down in the Gulf Shores area aren't conducive to infiltration. It's only when you get up to the beach do you find highly high sand areas that have the, one duct, the groundwater that you need. Because if you have shallow groundwater, you also can't infiltrate. I mean, there's just several issues that most of the sites around here don't, aren't, you're not able to do it. Or we would change these ponds to not be wet ponds. It's very expensive to make wet ponds. If we can do a dry pond that will infiltrate, that is actually a lot cheaper for the developer. And so to meet that total suspended solids, it's not a reason, it's not something they, they're not trying to do. It's just we don't have the soils for it. I can think of, I guess, one other pond, I think in Sedgfield. We were not the engineers for it, but they had planned it to be a wet pond, but when they dug it, they actually had very high infiltrate, high infiltration rate. They couldn't keep the pond wet, so they switched it over. But you don't find it very often around here.
So Larry, are, are you saying that you all are not trying or concerned about the volume that would be displaced in other people's property?
I mean, we're always concerned, that's why we do the downstream analysis. And we've done the downstream analysis to find that the volumes, we believe, are mitigated over time to not cause any downstream adverse impacts.
So is there anything that you all thought about as far as mitigation, as far as decreasing? I know the flow rates are lesser, but it shows that the volume has increased even though the flow rates have decreased. So have we thought of or tried to think of anything to mitigate that situation for win-win situation?
The only thing that we have on our, our side is time to reduce that volume over time, so you're not increasing it all at once. You know, we don't have soils here that are conducive to infiltration. I mean, they could put a pump on there to help irrigate, but when those volumes are high, the issue is going to be that they don't, the grass doesn't need to be rained on at that point because it just got through raining. These are the issues that we have.
Thank you.
All right. Can we turn to more questions for the engineer at this time?
No, subject to recall.
All right, thank you, Larry.
I'm sure.
All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and I will open the public hearing at this time. Please do not be redundant if somebody else has said what you are thinking. We, we will have already heard it. And so I'll go ahead and, and also when you stand up, if you'll state your name and your address. So Ally can put it in our minutes, please. All right, thank you. Mark, go ahead. And also if, if we could try to keep it to three minutes or less, I'll give Mark a little bit more time since he's speaking on behalf of quite a few people I know, so I'll give you a little bit more latitude. But, but after that, if we could try to keep it three minutes or less, it'd be great.
Thank you. So there are several issues, and I directly represent the Meridix-Stolar, which are just to the east by the east pond. They're literally, if this pond's developed, they are looking at the discharge pipe about fifteen yards from their back door, looking at the discharge pipe. In current conditions and heavy rain events, that drainage floods from those fields that all drain there. It floods and comes up to the existing buildings, including Mr. Stolar's home, his back door. If you walk out his back door, he's looking right now, there's trees and kind of a low area that would be the pond. And this would provide a direct risk of flooding and damage to the property there. To the south, Ms. Frisby, she has a pond just south of the line. And it's, you know, we talked about the opinion from Mr. Pipes. I mean, what he didn't say was what the law was. That was kind of the question, what's the law on that? And he kind of just kicked around and said, well, something, just the courts have to sort out, maybe a jury or something. No, there's law, and I put it in my initial response, the law is an upland developer entity, person, whatever, cannot redirect channel stormwater to a lower property owner where the volume or rate of flow is an unreasonable burden. If it increases, it's an unreasonable burden. There's no obligation from any Ms. Frisby or the Stolar's, the Meridix to receive that, and there's no right to discharge it. There's no legal right to do that. And he didn't answer the question. If you just look at his letter, he just never really answered the question because, you know, it didn't take, you can find articles all day about water rights in Alabama and discharging. So then how, how much? Is fifty, what, fifty-three percent increase? A fifty-three percent increase of runoff on a two-year rain event? Or a thirty percent increase just because someone wants to put a high-density development? Are you just supposed to say, well, I guess I just have to take it and just deal with all the flooding and erosion? No. Interesting here, your regulations state that when it's in this extra territorial area in your planning jurisdiction, if the, to the extent the county has a more restrictive regulation, it has to be followed. And the counties say if you're discharging on a private property, you have to have an easement to discharge that water. There is no easement, there's not going to be an easement. None of these people are going to agree to take this type of stormwater onto their property. That they, and I know Mr. Stolar was, was planning on being here. They can tell you if you need graphic examples of water coming in the back door of their homes as it is. A fifty percent increase or on a hundred-year event, a thirty percent increase? That's, that's not acceptable. There's no reason, as you pointed out, Lee, there's no reason to do this other than they want to put this high-density development on this property that may not be suited for it without consideration. It's almost a level of hubris when you just say, well, I'm just coming in here and I'm going to build it and my, my new neighbors, you just have to accept it. But more troubling to me though is the requirement that any engineer that submits a set of drawings or plans to Hunter to the, for your review ultimately, essentially when they submit it, they are certifying that they're accurate. Because they have, they don't, you know, they, they don't have time to, you know, go through and spend the analysis that is required. The first time this project came up, and Mr. Ken Underwood, and you'll hear, hear from him, can ask him questions in a moment. He is a hydraulic engineer, has done it for over forty years. And one thing he noted was on the outfall, because the rate was increased on the south line, a figure was used far downstream, not at the outflow point at the property line, but just grabbed a number downstream of the rate, so it made it look like it complied with your regulations. That was the first go-around. And this is modified, and now the change is all of the basin was incorporated in the runoff to the south. Mr. Underwood's not done any independent calculations. He's taken their drawings, their seven-hundred-and-fifty pages and gone through it. And he can tell you affirmatively that it's not apples and apples. When they did the pre-project calculation, it included entire basin area. In the post-project, there are bypass areas that don't go in the pond, but their rate and flow numbers come only from the pond discharge, meaning the bypass areas aren't counted in their final numbers. So if you're flipping through it and you go to the chart, you go, well, those numbers look, they look right, but you don't see how they got to their numbers, then you think, well, it meets the requirements, the design standards. This project does not meet your minimum design standards. And Ken Underwood's going to explain to you why. He did a supplement, and that one, that's attached to my letter. Some of it actually is pretty technical, he would explain it to you, but the, the issue is bypassing. And if you'll look on the overhead, you can see areas and what you, you mentioned, Lee, the areas where buildings are, houses, et cetera, that's just sheet flowing to the south. So that is a violation of your regulations. You can't, in a project this size, you're not allowed to develop and put impervious services and not capture that water. You can't, that, that's not, it's not a thing. You can't let it just say, well, it's only, it's only a little bit, it's only, what, one, two, three, four, five, six? There's only about twelve units or so that does that. So Ms. Frisby, whose home is right there, just south of that line where she lives, she just has to accept that additional runoff from that point. And that's not accurate. So this plan, according to Mr. Underwood, and I've called him, you know, twice, called him to make sure what I put in my letter was accurate. I sent it to him and said, I want to make sure this is right. This plan is not take on the post-project flow and raise. And the rate and the flow of volume is higher on every storm event, two through one hundred south. So it, it doesn't meet your requirements, period. And he can talk to you about that. This, this project is something that they filed the last day before the moratorium was put in. They had egregious issues with the first set of plans. They were allowed to self-table and go back. And these also are egregious issues that will impact these people and they do not meet the requirements. There's no easement for draining this volume of water, millions of gallons of water. They have no easement for that. Just a two-year rain event, there's almost one million gallons on a two-year rain event additional stormwater that's going on a private property. They have no right to do, they have no right to do that. And they don't have an easement to do that. They do not capture the post-development runoff in all areas, which they're required to do. They let it bypass. And then their calculations are skewed in that it does not capture all of the flow coming out because they have bypass areas that were not calculated in. When you add it all together, the bypass areas and the pond, rates and volumes are higher. So that's all I have, and if you have any technical, I would like you to hear just briefly from Mr. Underwood because he's actually the engineer and I certainly am not. Any questions for me?
Mr. Ryan, could you state your address for the record as well?
My address is one-four-three-one-four Cool Avenue, Magnolia Springs.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ken Underwood. I live in Magnolia Springs, Alabama, one-four-seven-one-five Oak Street, three-six-five-five-five. I'm a civil engineer, been doing this for longer than I care to confess. But they contacted me to take a look at what was proposed. And so I did. I would go into and look, looking, I'm, I'm looking at only drainage issues. Drainage narrative and calculations. This is the third, no, second iteration that, that I have seen. And I, I looked at the methodology they used and it's the same methodology I've been using for years. Have no problem with methodology. I didn't go back and recompute any stormwater discharge values, rate, or total. I took their numbers. And I think you were getting handed something here today, maybe you got it earlier, but it was something, it was dated April twenty-eighth. I went back and, you know, trying to make it simple, and I do, I handle the simple things better. But there's two pages, a little, a narrative there, and then the, there's two, two attachments, one A. And if you look at one of them, it's pre-project, I printed it on there, and this, this was out of that seven-hundred-and-fifty-page document. This is what supposedly represents the pre-project condition. And you look at the, the little hexagons there, one S, two S, three, three S. Those represent the, if I can back this thing up. How do I back up to the, the, the pre? One, one more, yeah. This particular drawing right here, those are the three areas of discharge. One to Lawrence Road to the west, to the south, that, that middle section. Then the other area to the upper right-hand corner discharges to the east. And if those areas are, that one S, it discharges to Lawrence Road. Three S is to the east property line, and, and two S discharges to the south. Well, if you look at page A one, I won't go through all of this, but you know, just to let you know, my methodology and where the, the values that I put in the tables came from, I did not generate those values. Those values were in the report. On A one, there is a, basically a summary. This is the pre-project condition for subcatchment, one S, two S, and three S. Those values there for runoff area, runoff volume, total volume discharge. You'll see like zero-point-seven-eight-three AF, acre feet. That is one acre of land filled to twelve inches, you know, one foot deep. So their computations and their, their summary sheet, and it does this for all the two, five, ten, twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred. So that's where my numbers came from. I, I looked at their table that was in their drainage narrative and calculations, and that table, I looked at it and I couldn't verify the numbers, and I thought, well, And I thought, "Well, let me just go look and see what their computer printout tells me." And that's how I came up with the fact that the discharge to the west, Lawrence Road, total volume, discharge rate, all reduced, acreage is reduced. Then when you look at the discharge to the south, total volume was increased for every rainfall event, total runoff, the peak runoff rate was increased. You have to include the bypass areas. The water that's reaching, going to the south, that is coming out of the pond, and that's coming out of the bypass. That is still going on to the property owners on the south side. Same thing on the east, the bypass area, that's water that's still flowing to the east. It's not going through the pond, but you sum the two to get the total value of stormwater that drains to the east, south, and to the west. And that's what my table did in the report, I think it was dated April 28 or something like that, April 20. So I, and I converted acre-feet to gallons. Gallons are, you know, we can visualize a gallon. Who knew what a gallon of milk looks like? But you think about a cubic foot. Engineers use strange units. I'll admit that. But converting cubic feet to gallons, there's 7.8 gallons in a cubic foot. Cubic foot of water weighs 62.4 pounds. Gallon of water weighs eight, 7.8 gallons per cubic foot. So, and then convert acre-feet to gallons, that's just a simple little math problem. But I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. I computed the percentage change and the volume change or rate change, I computed that, simple math. But the values that I put in the tables came directly from their report.
Any questions for the speaker?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Underwood, how you doing?
Fine, thank you.
Do you have an opinion about the receiving drainage area to the south? Let's just talk about it coming out of, I'll call it a retention pond, coming out of the retention pond into the receiving body, meaning down to the pond that is existing, not on this property, but on the adjacent property to the south. And as it is associated with the amount of soil that is carried coming out of that retention pond to the north, we call it hungry water. I mean, because everything has settled out in the retention pond, so when it comes out, nature's an equilibrium. It's going to find, depending on the volume and the velocity, it's going to find the amount of soil to pick up, to carry. So what about the impact on the down drainage area?
I have real concerns on discharge from the ponds. Now, today, stormwater discharge is a sheet flow, and the contours will direct the flow path. With the pond discharging, it basically is discharging at a discrete point. You don't have the sheet flow, the shallow sheet flow that you have in the natural state. You're discharging at a discrete point. And the contours and the drainage path there are not capable of handling that extra concentrated discharge.
It's a point discharge.
Essentially, a point discharge, yes.
Point discharge as opposed to a sheet flow. What about the receiving body of where the existing pond to the south is, ultimately in that unnamed tributary going to the creek? And the impact of what would happen with that kind of velocity, that kind of volume into that receiving body?
Not only have you concentrated the discharge, which would be, you know, has a very high potential of causing erosion, like you said, hungry water, it was free of sediment.
Right.
It has a velocity and the flow depth, so there's a very high potential, you're going to have erosion between the discharge point and the pond to the south. And the pond to the south is going to be a settling pond, essentially will become a settling pond for those eroded materials. And you've got the additional total volume of water that reaches that pond in every rainfall event because of the development. We've taken pervious area, pasture, woodlands, and we've made asphalt and rooftops and sidewalks. And so, you know, we've concentrated the flow by the ponds, and we have increased the total volume of discharge. And both of those, where I happen to live, I am the recipient of upstream development. So like a two-year rainfall event now, I'll get like five years' worth of runoff. So I have personal experience with runoff.
Well, the good example is when the Alabama Department of Transportation took the water on the four-lane and dumped it in to Fly Creek up on the four-lane on its move down toward the basin there at Fly Creek Marina. There's not a bow in that creek any longer.
Yeah.
Because of that additional volume, volume and velocity, and it eliminated them all. And I guess that's the whole issue associated with our water quality today, when we have got situations where we can't control the water. And settling ponds sound great, and it is, we had a lot of conversations about that. But settling ponds are great until you understand that the equilibrium, when it comes out of the pond, it carries no sediment. It's going to pick it up, therefore, it's going to scour it from the banks, it's going to scour it from the bottom of the receiving drainage area.
Well, I mean, depending on the speed.
I'm sorry?
The velocity is a big...
The velocity and the volume is what dictates how much water, I mean, how much soil it's going to carry.
Yeah.
And whatever it is, if it comes out with none, it's going to pick some up, it's going to scour it from somewhere. Well, the point is, is that we just got to do a better job. And I guess what my question to you is, would we anticipate that the magnitude of the water coming off of this development would have that kind of an impact in the two tributaries?
I think it would be extremely likely. I would be surprised if we didn't have erosion occur, and especially the pond is going to be overwhelmed by the additional increase in total volume of water discharge during any stormwater event.
Wonder how the neighbor to the south feels about his pond?
Mr. Frisbee is not...
Mark, Mark, you've got to move on. I know, but he asked it to the engineer.
Oh, it was rhetorical.
Anything else from anybody? Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this side?
Thank you. I'm Gerald Moore. I live at 19905 Lawrence Road. I am a registered mechanical engineer in the state of Alabama, Mississippi, South Carolina. I'm not going to talk about stormwater. First of all, and my attorney has advised me that you don't care about this, but when we first met with the developer in October, the Gables family, which owns all of the property to the north of this property, farmland, asked that the name be changed. And of course, you can see that it's still Gables of Lawrence. Well, that name has been registered to the Secretary of State of Alabama by me, and it belongs to me. It does not belong to them. They cannot use that name. They have not asked to use it, and I would not allow them to use it. Secondly, the traffic study, we think it is flawed. If you look at the Aldi development, you can see very much going on right now. That traffic study done for you last summer said that there are 617 cars traveling east on 48 now, not after Aldi opened, we're talking about current condition. 617 cars traveled east on County Road at the peak hour of 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning. The developer's traffic study was not updated, it was provided in the February report. It shows only 195 cars traveling east one mile from the Aldi. Our question is, what happened to those 422 cars? Did they all go into River Mill or down Blueberry Lane? There's something wrong with their study. The study was completed in October, but they didn't tell us the date. In October, there were four out of 12 school days that were holidays. Did they do the study on a school holiday? And they missed the traffic from schools, from school buses? We don't know, they didn't tell us. Secondly, I want to talk about sewage plan. I want to show you what the cost of this plan is. They are going to add the 136 units now, I think it is, through a force main on County Road 48. It will join with the force main coming from Pine Run to the east. That sewage flow will then go to River Mill, which has a lift station. The number of houses in River Mill and Pine Run is 189 houses. The number of houses and units in this development, and also in the overland development, which you've already approved, on Highway 48, on County Road 48, with 61 townhomes and 16 apartments, is more than double that number. So they're going to double the sewage flow to River Mill. If you double the sewage flow and you don't do anything else, you have to double the velocity. Friction in the pipe, and I'm telling a little bit of engineering, I'm sorry, goes up by the square, the velocity. So sewage systems, what you want to do is maintain the velocity. In order to maintain the velocity with a doubling flow rate, you'd have to go from 10-inch pipe to 14-inch pipe. River Mill discharges to the number-one Quail Creek Lift Station. It's 7,703 feet by your own Fairhope department's report. That would cost Fairhope $423,665 just to replace the pipe. Now, there are other engineering solutions. You can change the pumps, you can change the size of the pump, but none of that's figured into the cost. They're just going to dump it into River Mill. Your city is already under lawsuit by ADM to improve your sewage system. River Mill Station Number 32 isn't on the list to be improved. And Quail Creek, which also has a 10-inch outflow, is not going to be completed until We just think that the errors that they've made compound to so much of a lack of care in the engineering. To show you, and I don't think you'll find this true with most of the people, homeowners who come to you, most of the time they come, they're full of emotion. We have spent over $20,000 of our money for legal and engineering support. Now, I doubt, if you'll find very many homeowners will spend that kind of money, but we did. We're convinced that this thing needs to be denied. We ask that five of you vote to deny this today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak to this side?
Hi, my name's Jen Gleese, and I live at 496 Dover Street, that's 36532. I'm speaking on behalf of parents of children in the Fairhope School areas. I'm not sure if anybody realizes how much these developments that are supposedly affordable are going to affect our children. I have three kids in the Fairhope School system, all the way from first grade until seventh grade, and every one of their classes is at 20-plus students. We have three elementary schools, that total 22 kindergarten classes, I think, which each class has over 20 students. With COVID, that's happened, and our kids are already struggling. And now we're going to add more children, because I think the average household has two children now. And if you add 130 homes, you're going to, I mean, at least see 100 kids? And that's going into our Fairhope School system. We're also funneling into one high school. Is there any plans for additional schools, like not portables? Like, these kids deserve more, they deserve better. Traffic, that trying to get out and go to school, it's already bad. And I live off of Lawrence Road, and so we're going to either divert, because my kids go to Newton and the middle school, we go through Quail Creek, which is 20 miles an hour, and people are already speeding through Lawrence Road and Quail Creek, you know, and, you know, he was discussing about his kids playing out in the streets. Well, you're going to add 300 more cars to that area, and my kids play out in the street right now, and it's quiet, and I don't need a pond for them to fish in, I want them to play in the streets and feel safe. So trying to get out on 181 to fight more parents taking their kids to school, and they could say, "Well, put them on a bus." But we don't have enough bus drivers. We're struggling. There's three kids to a seat in the buses, they're overcrowded. The buses take, if I put my kids on a bus, they get home an hour after school gets out. So we want to torture more kids, because we're suggesting that these are affordable houses. And I'm just curious who they're affordable to, because I guarantee you, they're not going to be what people are wanting the affordability as. So that's my questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this side?
Hi, I'm Tanya Halterman. I live at 19818 Lawrence Road. My fellow property owners here, I don't think are going to join tonight. This is Gloria, who lives directly to the south of the property. I live one over, so I'm two lots down from that property. My property is terraced, and I have the creek, I guess the second tributary that this feeds into. We purchased our property about six years ago. I'm a retired special education teacher. I taught in Fairhope the last 10 years of my career. Lived in Daphne, couldn't afford to live in Fairhope. I saved for 12 years to get here. Bought my property on Lawrence Road, and I opened a therapeutic riding barn. I serve children with autism, I served the Exceptional Foundation, probably about 800 people over the last five years that I've been there. I currently have a program called Read and Ride, where kids with dyslexia read with me for 45 minutes, and then they ride my therapy horses. Unfortunately, it's already, my property is terraced, so the property they're talking about is the high point, I'm the low point on both sides. So it won't go any further south in my land, I can tell you that, because it goes back up that way. But we'll be swimming, the horses will have flippers and snorkels. So my concern, I think we talked over and over about the general health, safety, and welfare of the residents there, and in my business, for sure. Again, I'm concerned, I said something before, I'm concerned about safety with this large of a development being right next to my property. Many of my kids have anxiety disorders, so it's a little frustrating to have chosen to build out there where it was nice and quiet, and now be faced with this kind of development. But of course, you know, things change, and I understand that. But of course, you know, things change, and I understand that. But I am very concerned about the runoff. When it rains, it's already, it's a, it's a river through my property for several days. Gloria's pond is, there's not going to be a pond there, it's just gonna be an ocean between her property and mine. So that's certainly our concern. I think all of the data shows that it's not going to be a good, a good fit for our area. It is rural, that's what's lovely about it. That's why we all chose to be there. And I just think it's a shame if we don't preserve some of those areas. Again, I know everybody wants to live in Fairhope, I wanted to live in Fairhope. I saved for it for a long time to get there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Anybody else supposed to speak to this side?
I'll speak.
Hi, Elizabeth. Oh, come on Gloria.
And we've got, we've got water, traffic, sewage, and green space. So if you've got new stuff, please, we got, if it's gonna be water runoff, we got that already. So don't need to hear that.
Well, I am here, I'm Gloria Frisbee. I live at one nine eight four six Lawrence Road, three six five three two. And there's two things I want to add about the water runoff on the south of the property. I have a pond, it's been developed, I've been there thirty-two years, and it's a fishing pond. I have brim, and I have bass. And I have grandchildren that have grown up fishing in the pond. And between my pond and the development, holding pond, I have a driveway. So what's gonna happen to my driveway if their pond overflows? And the water is running off over my driveway? I mean, it's a driveway I use to access the back of my property and to go to my daughter's property because she lives directly behind me. So that's my concern. I've water runoff into my developed pond, fishing pond, and my driveway that I access to the backside of my property. And I do have one more question. Would this development be a gated property development? Or anyone riding down the road just be able to drive through there?
The roads would be private. I would think that whether they gated or not would be dependent upon, you know, the owner at the time. I don't know if this is going to be an apartment, or if this is going to be individually owned by an owner's association, but...
Well, on the paperwork I read, it's BTR. Isn't that built to rent?
It is all single, not, we have not reviewed this to be kind of a process. Okay, we don't, that plane's broken. The point is, they could, that could change. We, one of the questions we don't ask is, you know, whether it's going to be rented or owned, and we don't... As far as that goes, the private roads, so I mean, that could change. But at this point, they have not asked for that.
Well, I'm just, you know, concerned about safety.
Sorry.
Crime, safety, you know, because we have a lot of elderly people that live in that area. And, you know, I'm just concerned about how safe is it gonna be in the neighborhood? You know?
All right. Thank you, thank you very much, yes ma'am.
I'll go real quick. My name is Elizabeth Gable Wilson, one one nine eight two County Road forty-eight. I would like to talk about the name of the proposed development, the Gables on Lawrence. The Gable name first came to Fairhope in the eighteen-fifties, when my fourth great-grandfather came here from North Carolina. He brought his family and his possessions, and he settled near what is Gayfer Avenue and Bishop Road. He was a farmer by necessity and trade. He created a lineage of farmers that can be traced down to me. Over the years, my grandfather and his father before him have owned and operated many different parcels of land on the east side of Fairhope. We are Gable Farms. We have one property on County Road thirty-three and the other on Lawrence Road that we've operated since the nineteen-sixties. They're kind of our two main farms. Currently, thirteen members of the Gable family live on the farmland due north of this proposed development. We have never owned or operated this development. Gable Farms and the Gables who live there directly touch the old Clay Homestead. That's the true name of this development land. Herman Clay owned this acre parcel from the nineteen-thirties until his estate sold it to the Hudson's, who then sold it to Sixty-Eight Ventures. So now you know who I am and who the Gables on Lawrence Road are. Let me tell you how this connects to Sixty-Eight Ventures. When we first learned of this development, I immediately reached out to SE Civil. I called Larry on the phone, and I was like, look, there's been some confusion. We had a neighbor approach us who thought we bought the land and we're developing it.
Ma'am, I don't mean to be disrespectful, and I totally understand what you're saying. As far as the name, that would be between you and them, and maybe an attorney.
I know, I can wrap it up with one question.
We have nothing to do with names up here.
I know. I, basically, I ask you tonight, if they don't have the decency to change the name, how can we expect them to be decent neighbors?
Thank you. All right, I'll let one more person speak, and then we're gonna have to close the public hearing at that point. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Penny Chambers, I live at one nine nine seven three Lawrence Road, right across from the proposed development. And the way it's set up, my, one of my biggest issues is, one of the entrances is gonna be right in the middle of our driveway, our four-street driveway. Our mailbox is right there. With that entrance being right smack dab right there, we won't be able to get out of our driveway, I won't be able to check my mail. I mean, it'd be a nightmare. We already have trouble getting in our driveway because it's too narrow. Our delivery trucks can hardly get through there, it's a big problem already. And my other concern is like some others said about the safety issues, because we're right, we're facing Lawrence Road, we're facing that. And that entrance is right there in our face, and all them units, especially for rentals, they don't, they're not gonna be owners, they're not gonna care about the property, about being respectful. We've lived there for over thirty years, and it's always been quiet and rural, and I think it should stay that way.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the commissioners. We've got the engineer here, we've got staff, if you have any questions for engineer or staff. If not, I'll accept a motion.
Wait, timeout. Larry. I don't want to go through all of the calculations for your drain, for your traffic study. But this is kind of, this is not kind of, it is very similar to what we had last month with the one over on Dyer and Bishop, in terms of intersections. And I know generally how traffic studies are done, but I also know that I come some mornings, early on, at the intersection of Lawrence and Fairhope Avenue. The issue is not the traffic coming east on Fairhope Avenue to where they can immediately turn into the, into Lawrence Road. The issue is the traffic coming west on Gayfer, excuse me, on Gayfer, I get my place confused, on, on Fairhope Avenue, and having, and trying to turn into, into Lawrence, or someone at Lawrence trying to get out. I've been there before, I can't get out of there. I try to avoid that intersection. And what, what confounds me, or makes me unsure about your traffic study, is the fact that they think you need a turn lane coming east to turn onto Lawrence Road, but you don't need a turn lane coming west on, on Fairhope Avenue? It just doesn't work that way. That's the one that really ought to be there, but I don't understand how they, and right now, it already is a level, I think he said it's a level C, level of, anyway, it's a... And it doesn't consider this, doesn't consider Aldi that's getting ready to open up. And everybody tells me if you, if you just wait until Aldi gets the intersection dealt with, it'll all go away. No, I'm afraid it won't, because go to sixty-four on any given morning, and the traffic is backed up coming west on Highway sixty-four for three miles in the morning. So my point is, I don't, I'm just telling you, I don't buy your traffic study in any form or fashion. I think if there was going to be a development of this magnitude in that part of, of that neighborhood, that there would have to be some kind of a turn lane coming from the west to where you could get in there, and some form of, 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 of a traffic device that would allow people out of, out of Lawrence Road. Because you can't get out of there, as it is right now, much less any other time.
Well, hard, hard, I drive to work five days a week. And one day I'll go down thirty-two to Greeno. One day I take thirty-three all the way to forty-eight. One day I take thirty-three to Lawrence Road, just for a little difference. And the idea that there are fewer than, and by the way, I'm a, I'm a late-night person, call me at midnight. Don't worry about it, don't call me at six-thirty in the morning, though, I'm still snoozing.
How about, how about three in the morning?
But about nine, that'll be fine, that'll be fine. But at nine o'clock in the morning, nine-thirty, the traffic flow then is still above two hundred. I mean, I mean, I just sit there and usually, you know, wait for about a half dozen cars to go by. And that's not during the school time or any rush hour time. And, you know, I mean, to me, I think that, that, that traffic study, the numbers of, of cars going by was, was maybe on a Sunday afternoon, or, you know, Sunday morning or something like that, hydrologist or something.
There are certain guidelines that they have to do when they do these counts. I'm not a traffic engineer either, this wasn't done by our firm. But there are certain criteria where the times they have to do their counts and days of the week they have to do their counts. And Sundays aren't them. You know, traffic wasn't one of the major issues within the report, so we didn't bring the traffic consultant with us. But, you know, they have a certain criteria, they have a pre-op, they have to deal with the county, they have to get, with the county engineers to make sure that they're studying the correct areas that the county wants them to study. And the county blesses these traffic studies on that impact their intersections. And that's where we're at on this.
What's the level of failure, D?
Yeah, after C, after, anything after C is...
Anything after C is failure. But you're already at C at that intersection, is my, that's my whole point of all this BS that I'm spouting. But the point is, is that it's already, it's already at a C. You don't have, you don't have the developments up and running that are gonna be right down the road. You don't have this one up and running, and it's gonna, it's already gonna be a failure. And that left right turn lane coming east ain't gonna do a thing to help that intersection. Okay, okay, so that's it, anyway, that's it. Okay, second thing.
Yes.
Is the, the green space? Man, I mean, I'm like you, we play, we play baseball and football in the street. That asphalt tasted real bad, and all I can say is, it's not the way it is today, and especially in a neighborhood like this. It just seems to me that there's gotta be a way that you can take. Some of that long, narrow strip, thirty-five feet is fine until you're out there grilling in your backyard and the kids are throwing baseballs at you. My point is, there's, the guy, these developments have got to have somewhere the kids can go, and they got a place that they can, that's big enough that they can do something with it. And, and this one just, to me, really doesn't. I like the ponds, you know, I do, as long as they got water in them. But once they dry up, if, if they do, because it's not gonna be a, a running creek or running stream body of water into these, into these ponds, right?
No, but what they, they have a watershed fill in them, and then what you do on these, because you can't let them dry out, if so, the bent night cracks, and then they no longer work properly. You have to put fill valves on the irrigation system to fill them in periods of drought.
They do, there will be an irrigation system? Okay, all right, that's, that's, but, but I've got a problem with your greens basement also.
There are larger areas than thirty-five. We, he took the, the narrowest point of the whole thing, and that's what we were discussing. There are larger areas over by the pool that can be...
So the ponds are lined?
Yes.
So, help me wrap my head around, so what would happen if they weren't lined? They would infiltrate, but not enough? I mean, what's, that's...
Yeah, they would, they would eventually...
Isn't that the point, don't we want them to dry up?
That, now, the problem becomes is, they don't ever fully dry, and they become mosquito. It's if you don't have a certain depth within them. And so it's, you will eventually get evaporation, and you'll eventually get a little bit of infiltration. But once it gets to a certain depth, then, one, your aerators don't work, which we have to have in there, and then it becomes a mosquito breeding area.
I just, there's just gotta be, I counted nine projects that weren't on the beach that managed, and I don't question your soil analysis, I just, it can be done here. Maybe not on this one, but, I mean, it can be done around here.
And the, and the last issue, that last issue, which, which, nobody wants to talk about anymore because it's already been beaten, beaten to death, is the drainage. I got a real problem with your drainage, especially to the people to the south. And knowing, for example, Fly Creek, what happened to it, I don't see where anybody to the south that's got an existing pond that your, your drainage will flow into. I, I'm not a lawyer, but I would just, I just can't imagine that they would have to receive that kind of water. And maybe there's another alternative to, that will solve the problem without blowing their dam out. Especially for people that've got recreational ponds. They don't have, they don't have creeks flowing in or, or active water infiltration into their ponds either, so...
So, on this report that I was just handed, there are significant flaws within this report. I can sit there and talk to you about it, if y'all want to keep hearing about it. But he missed a simple key thing about hydrology. You don't add the peaks for different basins because the peaks are all-time dependent. And so what he did is, he went to each basin and added peaks together. If you look within these diagrams, these arrows that are on this post indicate areas that are being added cumulatively together, not just peaks, but also along the same time increment along those runoff hydrographs. So when you do that, the rates of runoff are correct. Is there an increase in volume? We've never said there's not an increase in volume. And so we're not arguing that point. We've talked about that one over and over again. But as far as the rate of runoff, the calculations we provided, which were also verified with a third-party engineer, I don't know how much time Richard spent on it, but I've had conversations with him about it as well. Those are accurate calculations. The rate of, the rate of runoff is reduced overall to each of these basins. The volume of runoff, yes, that is what the downstream analysis is for. Talking about downstream ponds, we analyze the downstream ponds to make sure that the volume, as they did hit those ponds, would be sufficient to not damage them. Other than that, I don't know what else you want me to tell you.
But, but, but let's take that one step further. When you've got sheet flow coming off a piece of property like this, and that sheet flow is spread out over an extended period of time, as opposed to bringing it all to a point discharge, that's where, that's where your issue, to me, that's really where the issue is. It's at that point discharge, because you're bringing all that water. If it's all flowing sheet, sheet flow across, then it's spread out over, and the volume, excuse me, the volume is the same, the velocity is substantially low, lower. When you bring it to a point to discharge it, your velocity is higher. That then means the opportunity for erosion and the impacts further downstream are substantially higher. I mean, it just is.
Let's be clear, the runoff from this site doesn't go directly north to south. It is flowing to the center of this property where there is a V where our discharge point is. What we have done on our discharge point is, we have a stealing basin that is at a uniform level that is going across the entire width of the contours where our runoff is discharging onto the property of the south. We're not sitting there and putting a pipe right there on the discharge and say, here you go, have at it. We have taken the, the length of our entire discharge contours, and we've created... We have taken the, the length of our entire discharge contours and we've created a stilling basin there.
Yeah.
So, um.
But Larry, I, I, you know, I, I get it, and I, I really, you know, before we move on, we get ready to vote here, I think we beat this, but, um, I, I, you know, I like the idea of affordable homes, I really do, I, I, you know, if that was a legitimate thought, that's a great thought, but I don't like the idea of the adverse effects per our sub-regulations to the people downstream because of the volume. That's the deal. So if there was some type of way that you guys could mitigate that, that's why I asked you that earlier, then I think that would be a win-win, and I think you would capture some of the audience with pervious-type situations or whatever, the, the living green, all that stuff that you can do now that we know about, if you were willing to put that type of energy and effort into it, I think we'd come to a win-win. But without those things, no one wants to be a bad neighbor and, and it's already wet from what I understand hearing the people. And then when you put, we all know when you put hard things, i- 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 that volume increases, you got kids down there, you got, I mean, I mean, you know, that, that's not a good deal, you know, um, you know, in, in reality. So, you know, with that, Mr. Chairman, are we, get ready, with that, I'll make a motion to, to deny on, on the basis of adverse, of adverse effects, um, um, and staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to deny based on the staff recommendation, which, and the second, the staff recommendation being to deny based on the green space. Is that correct, Corey?
Yes. On green space, staff and adverse, and adverse effects due to downstream, um, flows.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion at this time?
Just to be, just to be clear, the, the adverse effects you're talking about is the drainage?
Yeah, the, yes.
Just to make sure, we, we state the reasons for denial if there's a, if there's a motion stating, so just wanted to clarify that.
All right, I've got a motion and a second, further discussion.
Yeah, further discussion. Would you, uh, I would like to add the traffic issue in, top of it.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's many, but those are.
There's, there's, having a birthday tonight for traffic.
If I may, that's correct. If I may, if you're going to include reasons, you need to specifically include every reason that you are making your motion in the basis for your decision.
So I would make a motion to deny on the, on the, on the, on the basis of, of adverse effects due to drainage, volume of drainage, I would make a motion to deny due to green space as far as our sub-regulations or rather not meeting, and also not meeting our comprehensive plan as far as our nodes are concerned and traffic.
Sorry about the increased traffic in fact.
Okay.
All right, any more further discussion?
And you, and Holly, you seconded that?
Yes, Holly seconded it, no further discussion. All right, all in motion, all in favor to deny, say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the motion to deny passes unanimously. And if y'all could please, since we've been here a long time, um, do your celebrating or cussing at us outside the door with the door shut as quickly as possible so we can move along and go to dinner also.
Can we ta, can we take about a two-minute?
Yeah, we'll take a two-minute break right now and let everybody clear out.
Thank you.
All right, second item on our agenda, S.D. twenty-two point one-four.
All right, good evening, my name is Casey Potts, um, I'm presenting a subdivision of lots twenty-five and twenty-six of Colonial Acres on behalf of planning staff. Um, it is a preliminary final plat. And a note before we begin, um, staff did receive a letter from an adjacent property owner and that is included in your packet. So, um, the owner is Lafayette Acres LLC, S.C. Civil is the applicant and surveyor for the project. It is a three-lot minor subdivision located between Lafayette Drive and City Highway one oh four and west of U.S. Highway ninety-eight. The subject property is within the city limits and is zoned R-one. Something to note is that the original application was a four-lot minor subdivision. Due to the wetlands, the original design was reduced to three lots as presented tonight, and, um, the three lots are within four hundred and fifty feet of a fire hydrant, they front on a publicly maintained road, and they meet the lot size requirements.
All right.
So these two maps, um, indicate the zoning of the property and the surrounding properties. Majority are R-one, and the right map depicts the site conditions. So, um, this is the subdivision plat, um, it is owned R-one, there are three lots with a density of one point zero two acres, um, there's no common area, and the total area is two point nine four acres. Sidewalks are required to be built along Hancock Road and Lafayette Drive. Because minor subdivisions allow concurrent preliminary and final plat approval, the plat shall not be signed until the sidewalk is completed and inspected by the building department. And this depicts the location of the sidewalk in relation to the three lots. As you can see, there's a five-foot public access easement on the front of the three lots, and that's to give a little bit of freedom in terms of adjusting the sidewalk location because the majority of the infrastructure is already in place. While not required, a city sidewalk connecting Hancock Road to City Highway one oh four was discussed with the applicant originally. Due to the reduction of one lot providing the sidewalk was cost prohibitive, the applicant depicts a fifteen-foot public access easement from Hancock Road to City Highway one oh four in lieu of that sidewalk. The intent of the public access easement is to provide the capacity for pedestrian connectivity in the future. There are no plans to install improvements at this time, nor is there a funding source for said future improvements. And so that highlighted area is the pedestrian access easement that they are adding to the plat to provide future connectivity. The applicant agreed to implement a twenty-foot landscape buffer that shall remain undisturbed with the exception of new planting materials to fill in the visual landscape screen along Highway one oh four and Greeno Road. The buffer shall remain undisturbed and maintained by the Property Owners Association. The applicant is also preserving the historic landscape buffer adjacent to Lafayette Drive, which shall also remain undisturbed in perpetuity, and both of those are labeled on the map. Staff has requested that the landscape buffer be increased to thirty-five feet, matching the rear property setback, and we believe the buffer increase will help mitigate the road noise from one oh four. So, general comments, um, rear setbacks illustrated on the proposed plat are twenty feet but shall be revised to be thirty-five feet in accordance with the R-one standards, and they actually have met that, they provided a revision to that between when staff report was written in today, so that one is addressed. Lots one through three shall only be accessed via Hancock Road and Lafayette Drive. Access to lots one through three from Highway one oh four and Greeno Road shall be prohibited. The existing drainage patterns are not being changed, and then utilities are provided by the City of Fairhope. So that being said, staff recommends conditional approval of case S.D. twenty-two fourteen with the following conditions. Condition number one being that in the general notes, we would like them to add a note specifying the maintenance of the planting strip, um, and a note that the lots shall only be accessed via Hancock Road and Lafayette Drive. Access is restricted from one oh four and Greeno Road. Item number two has been addressed, so it is no longer applicable, so that's why I struck through it. Items three and four are kind of, items we're waiting on from external sources. We are in the process of renaming City Highway one oh four, which is subject to approval by city council, so that's something that will need to be addressed, um, prior to recording the plat. The subdivision name and lot numbering has been an issue with the mapping department with Bowlin County. Typically, that comes to, I guess, to a head after the maps have been recorded, so we're trying to mitigate a lot of those problems by addressing it now. Um, so we're, we're making a caveat that acceptance of the subdivision name and lot numbering, um, is subject to approval by the Bowlin County Revenue Department. And then we're requesting that they provide covenants and restrictions to planning staff prior to recordation. Item number six is that the inspection and approval of completed sidewalks along Hancock Road and Lafayette Road by the City of Fairhope Building Department needs to be completed. And item seven and eight memorialize, um, the condition of the buffers that we have shown on the plat. So with that said, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
There was one question, I know, I, I read an email, I just wanna make it public as far as the driveways, I think that what the, the, the community was speaking of.
Yeah.
Can we kinda talk about that in fairness?
Sure. Um, so the frontage is all on one side, there's nothing preventing the one, preventing the one lot from accessing, I think that's from the Hancock side, but it's not something we dictate driveways that, that is subdivision stands, so the.
But that would just be one, I mean, I remember them saying they didn't want to cluster.
Cluster, they did.
There's some challenges, um, Keith, will you go back to the plat? Let's kinda talk about a couple of things. On lot three, from when this subdivision was really originally created, we put landscape buffer that's required to be there, be made. So that limits lot three's access, that has to be, unless we wanna open this up. And just a background on this property, for about a year, we've been getting a lot of questions when it was, you know, they being proposed on the market, everything from gas stations to everything else. So happy to have someone in the neighborhood looking, doing this, but keeping it residential and keeping that screen along one oh four and Greeno. Um, but lot, the, the frontages are certainly to, you know we have a minimum. So some of the confusion on the setbacks and all were, were created when there was a lot, potential lot four. That didn't work out because utility, getting utilities back there. So some of those setbacks, issues and all were just, uh, just corrections in nature. They, I believe, and I don't wanna make this condition, but I do believe the applicant has agreed, uh, to, to increase the buffer, and I'm gonna be clear, we're not asking for that on Greeno because that does incomber lot three a little bit more than the others, but along the one oh four side, that's really the noise and visual screening, but, I mean, we're, we're not, we're preventing access from two roads, but saying that lot one can be accessed from either Hancock or Lafayette, uh, but we can't, I don't think we can dictate that.
Okay, so they just didn't want one, two, and three with the driveways all to the back is what they were asking? I was kinda confused by that, I didn't know.
All off Lafayette.
They wanted them all.
They did not.
They did not, okay.
Minimum two, or maximum two from Lafayette and one from Hancock.
But we can't dictate.
I don't think that's something we can be dictating.
That's right.
Where the driveway at this stage.
That's right.
If we had a site plan review or PUD, uh, they could do that, but I don't think there's any health safety or work for it issue to mandate access a driveway also.
It said, you don't wish to see a crowd of driveways across from our property. Oh, okay, so, yeah. So the difference is between two versus three?
Right, right. And these are lots that, the R-one.
All right, um, thank you very much. Does, uh, I, I see Larry let out here pretty quick. Saw him standing by the door, I was, he worried about a mob, trampling him, but, uh, I don't blame him. Um, do y'all have anything to add to this at this time?
I don't.
Okay. Any questions for the engineer at this time? Uh, is this a, is this a public hearing? Um, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, anybody who speaks to this item. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, commissioners?
I just have one comment that it, with the park happening across, isn't that the Dodge Triangle across the bay?
Yeah, so that, it would be nice if in the future that, that sidewalk could be created because a lot of kids in that neighborhood already mountain bikers there, and I could see them.
I think it's great, I, that's, we, we do, I don't think there are no plans.
But it's stubbed, right?
For the city to be going and putting that in.
Well, people use it even if there's an easement, but it'd be in the future.
There's a ditch at the one oh fours, we're getting across that.
So are they paving that, they're putting a little stub there, or?
No, they're just leaving the easement, so I can just tell you from, from, um, personal experience, when you've got an easement there, if somebody wants to do that project, it's just about getting the money and doing it.
Right.
If you don't have the easement and you got somebody there that says, oh, I don't want randoms walking through my yard, and they don't sign the easement, it just makes it a lot more problematic.
Very good, I agree. Yep, I just.
Motion.
I've got them.
Motion.
Motion to accept the staff recommendations, is that it?
S.D. twenty-two point one-four, move that we approve subject staff recommendations.
Second.
Everybody's there. We'll give Corey the second down there on this one. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Last item on the agenda, old business, S.D. twenty-fifty-two Laurel Brook subdivision.
All right, I am not gonna talk long on this, I wanna, so old new business, I'm just gonna kinda introduce, um, what we're discussing and let Dewberry talk. So this is Laurel Brook subdivision, we, we've approved a village subdivision plan and then a follow-up preliminary plat, should see final within the next few months. Just, just kinda get this out here, a month or so ago, I had a pretty, the higher-level executives, um, from Dewberry and D.R. Horton come into my office, and when they all come in, and it's not about a new project, you know, you kinda wonder what's going on. And, and they were all kind of crestfallen about an accident that happened on this site where a very large oak tree that was central to their whole plan was accidentally cut down.
What do you mean accidentally?
I, I was.
Accidentally cut something down.
Is it heritage, oops?
Yes.
Let me, let me, let me, let me answer that, Art, Art, let me, let me answer that.
Please.
One thing that's come of this is we found out with Fox Hollins and others, and the staff is, is correcting this, that a lot of times the, the people on the ground doing the work, the excavators and site prep guys, don't even have a copy of the landscape plan, which is the only way that they know what trees not to cut down. In this case, cutting that tree down created nothing for them, it just took a beautiful tree down, it wasn't like they intentionally did it to get more lots or anything, it's just, they had worked the whole plan around leaving this tree, and then the guy just got there and cut the darn thing down, and after he cut it down, he says, you know, it's kinda like, like we were saying, how often, if you're in that business, do you cut an oak tree down like this without really asking anybody, you know?
Right.
It was, it's just one of those things that, that.
Point, point well taken. How do you not ask the question, so therefore, how is it accidentally cut down?
Yes.
Guy on the, and, and I wanna be clear, so that, that was one of the first questions, like, hey, let, do it, ask for forgiveness. What, what, what are our solutions to mediate this? And I said, don't, you know, look, not changing anything, you know, so there, it can't be even a perception that you cut this tree down to get something, whether that was more green space, more lots, whatever. So, um, I do wanna say Dewberry's here to discuss this before they come back in for final plats, if the solution proposing, and if y'all have any comments. Voluntarily, they're not in, Laurel Brook is not within our city limits, the tree commission, tree, tree committee regulations don't apply, uh, but they did subject themselves to going to our tree committee and asking some, uh, some guidance from them as well. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over and let them present some ideas, there's nothing to vote on tonight, this is just a conversation. Um, you guys?
Uh, good evening, I'm Jason Estes, this is Dewberry. How did this accidentally happen? I wish I could tell you there was a, actually an accident, it was really more miscommunication between the contractor and the engineers, and it had nothing to do with the developer. He's right, this was a central tree for the development, um, they have a tree house that was planned to be planted around this tree. This has honestly done nothing but caused trouble for us, uh, for the developer, and the contractor is really sweating it right now, uh, to be honest. What we've done is we recognize where the mistake was, uh, we, like Hunter said, we met with them to discuss, you know, what are our options? What can we do to try to fix it if there's a fix? It's not ever gonna be the same as what it is, if what it was, but, uh, we did go and meet with the tree commission a couple of weeks ago to get their input on, let them know what happened. Got some valuable information from them on, uh, what we could do. What we are proposing is to, and you can't bring back a tree of that size, but we've, um, elected to come back with, um, a large thirty-foot, ten-inch oak tree, uh, which is difficult to transplant, and it takes a lot to get it to survive. Uh, and then about twenty-five smaller oak trees, which was, again, a recommendation from the tree committee. They said putting in a bunch of big trees, um, you would be better off to put in one big tree and a bunch of smaller ones that would have a better chance of survival, uh, and would catch up to this tree. We left a lot of trees on this property, I'm not sure if you're familiar with this. Okay, yeah, okay, go back to that. So, so this is what the plan was, we left a lot of trees out here, um, this was a specimen tree, obviously, uh, we're planning on going back and putting in a lot of extra trees, we already put in probably, what, a hundred and fifty street trees as, as required, but we'll also, also go back and, once we get through, it's hard to go out there right now and, and see where these. hard to go out there right now and, and see where these trees would go, because they're still moving around, moving dirt out there. They got piles of dirt. But at some point, when things get a little bit more calmed down out there, and we can go out there and pick out where we want to put these other trees, then we will, that's what our plan is. The reason for us coming to you tonight is so you're, you're aware of this before we get in here at final plat, and we say, hey, if we want our final plat, oops, we cut down this tree too. We didn't think that it was fair to you guys to spring that on you at final plat. We're not asking for anything tonight other than let you know what we did. Problem we have in that we are trying to fix it.
Did you have a tree preservation plan, or were the existing trees?
We did. And as, as I believe Lee mentioned, that tree preservation plan is in your landscape plans.
Then on the grading plan, were the trees that were being retained showed on the grading plan?
That was part of the confusion. There was a tree preservation plan that was in with the landscape plans. These, these contractors.
That happens all the time. They, they split it up.
Our policy now, immediately, we started figuring out, what do we have to do internally to, to fix it? So.
What, I'm wondering what we need to do, like, requirement to show existing trees.
We've already, so let me tell you what.
This is the county.
But, just one final, I mean, instead of them seeing the landscape plan, just having to show trees to be preserved on the grading plan. Because that happens a lot, that there's not a, even, even like just the idea that you, oh, we're dropping the grade by three feet here. Oh, yeah, there's a tree that's being reserved. We can't do that.
Absolutely.
So, well, we, we've always done, the tree preservation plan has been done by landscapers. At this point, we've decided that that's not the way we're going to do it anymore. We're doing it ourselves. We're putting it in our plans, and it's, it's a part of the set.
So, is this in our plan jurisdiction, or is this in the county? What, what, where are we?
Is the planning juris, this is, I'm sorry, this right now is no longer under the, the current planning jurisdiction. However, because we and this planning commission approved that plan, we, we will see it to its final, that, that was kind of one of the stipulations of, of the law and the change of law. But this was approved before that changed, so we will see it to the end.
Wasn't this about nine months ago?
About that.
We were doing a team meeting, remember?
Yeah, it was during COVID, Septemberish.
But we really don't have any say authority over this, right?
Right.
Yeah.
The final plat will come back to this point.
This is the one that had like the island initially or something.
Initially, so, so that's kind of what we want to make sure we're, we're note. The village master plan had an island and a, approximately three-acre lake. When the preliminary plat came in, the lake size was reduced to save this tree and a few others, and not do the island. The grading didn't work.
That's exactly right. When you start looking at root systems and all that, it didn't work. So, that was approved. There was a condition to go back to the three-acre lake. That was removed at the beginning of the tree. So, just want to be clear on what those conditions are, so that we're, we are approving, we're looking at it as not going back to the three acre, you know, but not changing anything else. There's just benefit to the tree being on.
It sounds like a reasonable, it sounds like a reasonable solution. I mean, there's some money in a, in a tree that size, you know, that ten-inch caliper, you know, they've got to spade those things for like a year and a half before they put them in there. And essentially, I read an article and did not believe it. It says if you plant a tree like the one you're talking about, and then you just plant a little, you know, seedling live oak next to it in about a six-foot by six-foot hole, and water both of them and fertilize them, that little one will catch up with the big one because its taproot will go down. I don't know if you've heard that or not, Art, you're in the business, but it says its taproot will go down.
Going to be a live oak?
The, the big one is, actually.
So, what's the one you're going to plant?
That's what I'm saying. We were planting a live oak.
Yeah, okay.
The tree commission actually recommended some other.
You know you're not going to plant, you're not going to plant it now. Not during this time of year.
That's a whole nother conversation I have to have with Hunter about.
Wintertime.
Well, they, they recommended November.
October, November.
So, let's, let's talk, let's talk about the other, what comes up after this, because typically amenities are installed before final plat, meaning the playground equipment and all that good stuff. This plan was, the tree was central to the, the treehouse. And they still plan on doing that. The, obviously, it's right in the center, can't be built, and then plant the tree later. I think on the table is perhaps bonding the.
Well, there's, I mean, a couple, and we hadn't, Hunter and I hadn't even gotten a chance to really go through this much, but it, it occurred to us, timing on the tree and timing on final plat of the first phase. We can certainly have the tree and the, and the treehouse finished before the end of the second phase, just so we can get to the winter and get the tree planted, because you can't build the treehouse without the tree.
Who's going to do the transplant?
Uh, we don't know yet. We've, we've.
Well, I mean, it's not just somebody going to go out there and dig a tree up.
No, 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 no. We'll have a, we'll have a.
But it's going to be somebody that understands the, the inner relationship between roots and foliage.
Yes, sir.
Be professional like yourself, sir.
The, the other thing we were going to, the other thing we were going to look at.
I don't call myself professional. I do know how to do it.
Art, are you trying to get hired?
No, I'm trying to retire. There's a difference between getting hired and retired.
So, I think now you're going to have to recuse yourself.
Yeah, it seems like the, the treehouse.
Wait, 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 let's go back. If I hire Art, does he have to sit out?
You thought Larry was treated poorly to tell you, hire Art, see what happens.
It'd be another, I, another one of what I need is another high-paying extracurricular activity. Yeah, that's what I.
Well, the other option would be to see if we could find another tree on-site that was nice enough to put the treehouse on, but the location of this really fit with, so we're thinking that the location is, is a good fit. The pond was actually graded. If you can see on this picture here where that, it's actually graded to, for a nice place for the tree to be.
I have a great idea. If that tree doesn't work out, just put, I mean, purchase an artificial pine tree that could be part of a playground facility, something that, I mean, that's not ideal, but it's going to be, it's going to sustain something. And I'm thinking of, you know, Disney World stuff, you know, something that's going to fit with that, what you draw on, if you can come up, I mean, that's probably about the same price as the large tree that got cut down.
Seems like the treehouse would help hold that tree up, huh?
What about, uh, did you move the soil in, or is this native?
This native.
And it's clay?
Uh, it's.
Looks like red clay.
Well, you've got some material, you've got some material on the, huh? You've got some material on the lots that, some of that might have been brought in.
I'm sorry?
You got, there may be, what you're seeing in these pictures, there may be some material that was brought in.
I'm just saying, don't put the tree in the red clay because it ain't going to live in that.
It'll be in the neighborhood.
Sounds like a good idea, though.
I'm sure you have somebody who'll do this, but, and this is, I'm playing Art right now, but, you know, I've always heard that you should use a growth regulator so that the tree puts all its energy into building new roots, not into growing more leaves when you put it through a shock like that. And that might be, there might be a follow-up treatment. You know, there might need to be a commitment to do it.
That's where I think even Paul Pott knows that, or treats me, he says, you know, you look for a source that's already prepped that tree, got it out of the ground.
It's a little spade for a year and a half, two years.
And let it get, you know, right, so the land is planted.
A ten-inch tree is a big tree.
I think this is, this is an after planting treatment.
But you got to cut, you have really got to cut the foliage back. That's what the ticket is. You got to get it, try to get it in an equilibrium with root system. You can't do it when you cut a big tree like that because you've destroyed so many roots. But you've got to cut foliage back because it'll never live. I don't care what time of year you're going to plant it.
Well, we will be doing, learning a lot here in the next few months about.
Well, Farno knows that stuff better than anybody. He did the, he was subcontracted to do all of those oak trees at the Beau Rivage, which were huge.
That's the guy that was big time. Yeah. He was very helpful.
So, are you asking us about whether or not you think you should to be proactive and go ahead and de-build your, your playground equipment that, around this tree, or wait till the tree is developed? Is that, what do you?
I think, well, we really came in here to let you know what, what happened. The question about the amenities was more whether it was built in phase one or in phase two. Phase one makes it very difficult because of the time of the year that we will be finishing up the subdivision. If, if you feel like that it's okay if we postpone the amenity till, you know, there'll be other things that may need to be done, but as far as the treehouse and the tree, if that was in phase two, then that would make it a little bit easier for us to get this tree in at the right time of year.
If staff agrees with that, it sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Which is not being a basic, maybe the tree needs to.
I would imagine they would, but I can, I can find that out and tell you that.
You just bring it in with a helicopter, you sit right in there and monster.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn based on?
Thank you for your time.
So, move.
Thank you. All right. Motion, second, amen.
Amen. Thank you. A donation of a hundred thousand.